And does the coach, does the coach want to say anything? Come on now, you gotta say something about it. Come on, y'all get up, y'all get up. Somebody short stand by me. Congratulations, thank you, this is yours, did good. Is that a topic?
Nah.
Y'all welcome to stay for the meeting. Alright, do we have any public comments concerning the agenda items? Item number seven under general discussion, item one under seven, discuss quick plan B to transfer D to Attorney County Development Authority, and that's the land that behind flash is, we had to put it back in our names to get it paid, now that we've got it paid, we're going to deed it back to the Development Authority so they can even sell lots, or sell the whole, develop the property, that was the original plan that we had. Did y'all have any? More to it?
I think we should wait until we get a settlement with the, when it, on the, on the, uh...
Okay. On paying, on paying for the...
Paying for the paving, because we may have to ask the Development Authority to contribute some. I'm hoping this needs that, our D O T is going to fund it all, but we're not really...
Alright, we will definitely, if we get that, if we get it worked out before next week, or...
I also got a revised deed that puts the language in there that it refers back to us, the deed that they did not hit that language. So I've revised that, just got it in there.
You don't have any other discussion on it?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Dillon, we need to make sure those issues are resolved first.
Alright, we will try to address that this week, if not, we'll work it out next month. Item two is discuss medical renewal benefits for Attorney County. Mr. Tish, you want to jump on that?
I sure do, thank you, Chairman. The county clerk I met with, the representative from Arista, a couple of weeks ago, I was asking, um, regarding our renewals, and all that information has been sent out to you, if you look at page... She outlined her recommendations on... Page nineteen, so the recommendation of the broker is that we stay with Cigna as we are, and with a slight rate increase, she did make it clear that her company was able to negotiate our rate down from thirteen percent to six point five percent, which is pretty good, and that will be approximately an extra eighty thousand dollars a year. Now she did also give us a second option of switching to Aetna, which Aetna offered the county a rate increase of only one point three six percent, but she wanted to make it clear that we need to consider everything concerning switching carriers, what's in that work, what's out of that work, and how would affect our employees.
It's a big deal, switching carriers.
Yes, sir, also we're getting everybody changed over in the short amount of time that we have. She also recommended for a basic life, and that we stay with Mutual of Omaha because they gave us a rate pass, which includes voluntary life, term life, Mutual of Omaha also gave us a rate pass, she recommends we stay with them. For voluntary disability, Mutual of Omaha has also given us a rate pass. For dental, she is recommending that we renew our dual option with MetLife, as they negotiated a rate increase of only three point three percent. For vision, we were given a rate pass with MetLife, if you choose to stay with them, which is her recommendation. For critical illness, we also get them a rate pass. For accidents, the renewal with MetLife is also given a rate pass with Grateful Dead, and for legal, she recommends we stay with MetLife with no rate change. For Cobra, her recommendation is that we remove from clarity benefit solutions to interactive medical systems.
For, on what?
For, for Cobra.
What's Cobra?
Yes, sir, it's for those employees who are paying for their own insurance, like those who are retired, and she's recommending that because of the fee structure and the benefits that we do move those services.
So if somebody retires, they can keep the insurance that they're paying, that they're paying for?
Yes, sir. Now, again, she has given us two options, to stay with Cigna and or moving with Aetna. Now I do have discussion for the board, and maybe a recommendation, it's my understanding that now employees are required to make a contribution of fifty dollars a week, a pay period toward their health insurance. Now, that, that is very modest, to say the least, and it may be in the best interest of the county to ask them to make a hundred dollars of a pay period contribution to offset the rate increase, it wouldn't be burdensome to most of them, it would be, you know, unwanted and unpleasant, but definitely not a hundred dollars.
They'd be paying a hundred dollars...
Yes, sir.
Two hundred dollars a month.
Yes, but the premium is going to go under Cigna's, it's twelve hundred a month for the county, correct?
It is.
Almost eleven, eighty-eight ninety-seven, is that correct?
In thirteen.
Thirteen, well thirteen twelve.
Yes, if we stay with Cigna, and then increase in that to two hundred dollars a month, is actually about eighteen thousand a month, and two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred a year, that can offset the cost of insurance. The total premium, understanding will be one point three million, so I think two hundred and twenty thousand is a modest pass.
And we're paying on three hundred dollars to not take insurances, that's still...
We have to, we have to re-vote on it.
That's, that's, that's what...
Did nobody say that?
I think also we see Medicare and Medicaid.
Do you think there's some...
I have two employees.
I was gonna say, there's some employees, some...
But we should still give them that option.
We just have to vote on it because that's part of it.
And stay at three hundred, is that our...
What we had on raising.
Raise?
Yeah, if we go, make the employee pay another hundred dollars for insurance, eh, you kidding your employees if you're not going...
We'll give no raise.
If we go, then, then there's no sense, either don't leave it.
Yeah.
Don't, don't.
You doing no raise.
Leave it like you.
Yeah, leave it.
If you pay the employee paying the hundred dollars...
If you give a raise to you, then...
You ain't getting no raise.
We just have to agree, I think at the budget time, that if we're not going to give raises, that we don't entertain discussions for raises, certainly because of current budget, and if that's for the entire year, we don't entertain, because then it's not fair to the total employee base.
But that's, if we're considering going, if we're considering going up to two hundred dollars, then not doing that is a raise in a way.
It is, yeah, yes, because we're paying more absorbing the, the cost of that.
Because it is going up on us.
So it is a, is an indirect...
Yeah. Is there any, is there any more department, if, if we go up, I know there probably more jumping, but the, uh, is there been any problems with employees, any department has anything to you about problem with the insurance?
Um, no, sir, I do believe that, I'll take that back, I believe the chair might mention some, some troubles that we didn't have.
I think his was with the vision of the devil, or may never talk about, I don't know, who else you know about? That's a, that's a... Any thoughts from y'all? Got all on the medical bill?
Yes, um, I think we can ask, we can get a vote today.
Just put a pressure on us.
We can get a vote today, um, because we are on a tight timeline on...
So she drug around getting all the information for us, now we...
You gotta be a fervent...
Unless we're, we're entertaining staying with who we, with the suitors again, but it's definitely a tough type of thing to turn down, because we have to do open vote, and everyone...
I'm not interested in that, I'm not interested in brokers, we're not brokers for... So if we're going with Cigna still...
That's because nothing's changing, that's the only piece of this that we have to decide.
Wait until next week. We don't have to amend the agenda if you don't want to vote today.
If we're going to stay with it, it can wait until Tuesday, because that's the type of...
Or planning on someone else is, is not an emergency. Discuss agreement with Georgia Indian Department Services for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. It's not two, that's...
I mean, this, the contract that is submitted every year?
It's just, it's just a...
Just in housekeeping, um, I think it went up like maybe two thousand dollars from last year.
And we're, we're gonna look at that damn budget, I'm sure.
If we sign this number out to this number, it's eighty-eight thousand eight ninety-three fifty-two, so it's monthly payments of seventy-four hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. So, but it's the same, I looked at it, it's basically the same agreement as we had last year, I didn't see, unless you caught something, Tris, I didn't see any differences between this and last year's.
I just think the last year would be a D C stuff, but I can go back and look at it.
Yeah, it's just the money.
Three dollar.
But I meant the, the actual contract, I didn't see.
Well, we gotta have... Well, two thousand. Any discussion on the... Uh, discuss janitorial services for Attorney County.
Yes, sir, it has been made mentioned that we are almost up to renew the contract, but I propose that we don't renew it, and that we save those funds out of our staff to, um...
Overriding.
Um, now I did put in the budget that we would offer a stipend to those employees, but I'm not opposed to, we think these people that are not offering a stipend, um, with the stipend, it reduces the cost by twenty thousand dollars.
So you're saying a person per office would get a small amount of, of taking out the trash every month? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm used to the federal government, we take our own trash, we took our own trash out, we did all that stuff, so... So I, I'm, I'm used to that, so I'm, I'm sure this is going to be a major change for the county. I, I think we...
Going back to, just, just everybody take care of it.
Tris, I don't think they do it that well.
Twice a week.
Twice a week?
Get out of, uh, once a month for election. Twice a week, twice, no, twice a month.
What if we look into it?
But they still have to take their trash out, they still have to take their trash out.
We've talked about it, I think we can do it.
County manager suggests that we let things probably handle that. I'm getting... Discuss the liquid garbage accounts, the, uh, the garbage has been a problem for thirty years, it's still a problem. The, I, I went through that bill another day, I don't know if y'all looked at it, I know you looked at it, the, I'm still confused, and I didn't get it, so the, how, it's hard for me to argue with a citizen about what they owe, I mean, I've seen four different pieces of paper, and they said four different things. I, I ain't at your, I ain't at your level of wiping it out, but I, I don't know if we didn't need to knock a hundred dollars off everybody's bill, or... I don't think it's way up, I, I ain't talking about, I don't think it's but forty to twenty dollars off, it's in that range, what I've looked at. You may see some different numbers on some of them.
Well, so I...
You told him, Joe.
I, I, there are a lot of individuals in here that I know that are deceased, and then we also know there's individuals that have moved out of the county, and so we have, we have to decide, we voted to have, our previous county manager actually looked at sending some of this to collections. I, I'm not agreeable, so writing about three hundred thousand dollars in trash bills, especially when we're trying to look at cutting budgets.
By the time you get to a bill with, break it on it, it won't be a ten out of a hundred dollars.
Well, but if it's, if it's a hundred dollars less, I, I agree, that's negligible, you know, but anything over a hundred dollars, we've had some folks here that owe thousands of dollars, I just don't understand walking away from it. Well, that's not us, but, but at the end of the day, how do you look at the citizens that have paid their trash bill, and say it's okay that they paid it, and some individuals didn't, I just, I'm not, I can't support that.
I, I talked with the garbage collection guy the other day, and, I mean, him come to an agreement, we, he knocked five thousand dollars off the bill. So we have five thousand dollars that was actually given back, well, not given to us, we just didn't pay. The, so we do have a little money that, to play with, I don't know how many accounts is on there, but I say everything less than a hundred dollars, we definitely just, you know, right off everything.
With a hundred or less?
Hundred or less off, and I know...
Because the vast majority is...
You said, you said two things, you said who paid, you and you're not a free, I'm not... If you owe a little bit of money, you can take it off, but I feel...
I don't think the little bit may be incorrect, that's, that's the reason I'm...
Mostly they're twenty dollars, and I think they're the end of the, the February billings, I think that's...
Wouldn't you just decrease everybody's bill by...
Every, that's what I'm saying, like, give everybody a hundred dollar credit, the, but I ain't saying write a check to everybody, because I, I'm zero, well, no, I think I may be twenty, I don't know.
We'll give five of them free.
The, I'm zero, but it shows me with twenty dollars for next month.
Five months for...
Five months free. It, it's zero, but it's confusing, and it's, to me, it's confusing.
Yeah, mine's just zero, but, um...
Mine's zero.
So what that, what does that do to the money that I already paid?
They were good, as Joe told me, they were good taxpaying citizens.
Right it off.
The, but...
I'm just like, I don't, I don't write off thousands.
No, I, I'm good with, we could wipe out a lot of that list, because they're twenty, thirty, and forty dollars, some of them are six dollars, I don't know how we got six dollars.
Yeah, how do you get like nine fifty-four, I'm like, how do we end up with nine dollars?
It could have been late fees, but, that would just be massive, that's a start, let's get the hundred dollar people out the way. But I still say take everybody up to collection.
They even move to the two hundred low.
That mean they, that mean a few more years.
Well, and there's, I think we need to absolutely write off the ones that are deceased, because I, we, we should have followed the probate process, and we didn't do that, that's not us.
They didn't go back with any...
Well, I'm saying, we need to get them off our books, we need to remove them off our books, you know, I mean, there's people here that I know have passed away, why don't we send in a letter, we need to just say, we didn't probate it, and you write it off, because there's, there's no way to collect that yet.
Somebody may be still standing, they know.
The problem, but that's the problem, when, when somebody died, if it wasn't, then, then the next, if it was the wife, the, if it's in her husband's name, and he's dead, we can't go after the wife, the probate is what I'm being told by the lawyer, a lawyer making, jumping in on that.
Suppose you're like, rent a person, rent for somebody that died.
We just need to be careful, if we do this, we set ourselves up to not be consistent with the...
You write that person off, it's dangerous. Because you're like mine, but, I had to go and get mine, right on the straight now. I was about a hundred, about six hundred something dollars, but she had it, okay, if I had died, you wrote mine off, because you didn't write it off.
Mr. Brent, legally, what's on, on the dead, there's, I mean, if, if it's not in their name, there's no way of us going after anything.
I think if the property was in their name at the time, and the bill would accumulate it, then if you didn't collect it while it's in their name, then you have to go after the estate, but there's also statute limitations and those stuff, you gotta be concerned with.
And we didn't, we didn't put that, that way, or whatever we're gonna do with the court, or...
Statute limitations is what I think is concerned with.
Well, I just don't want to get in the middle of that, I don't want to go at a different...
Well, I don't want to say arbitrarily we write a hundred dollars off, and then send ourselves in a situation where we, we just arbitrarily treated...
Don't have a hard to say if they rent the property, I got five privileges, rent them out, if they don't pay their tax, they don't pay their government fee, they don't responsible for it, so if you write off a person that died, and they rent property off, then you still writing off somebody, you know, for paying, not because you did.
Well, see, some of these are from before the county changed the rule, where the landowner...
But, but we, we fix that problem by saying it had to be in the property owner name.
It would be not legally advised, the sooner we act, the better we're gonna be.
So how many years we going back?
Collecting one. We still collecting one, they weren't.
With the statute, any on statute on that?
We don't, we don't wipe it all one time, we're gonna get about two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, so one time, quote, same thing, I'm covering my, clean it up. So we did it before by two hundred thousand or so, we already did it before, it won't be the first time we did it, click.
I think we did it too.
I'm not gonna vote to click.
Okay, they call the tax pay.
What if we turn it, if we turn the whole thing over to the magic, say, here's the list, so you collect what you can collect, if you wipe out their dead, find out whatever, if you can't collect it, you can't, you can get collected, collect it, just like a plan move, whatever you got to do, and see how that works.
Yeah, and I'll just, the magic coach school, or whatsoever, know what they got to pay, my thing pay about a dollar.
Put it off.
But we gotta trust the magic to make it happen.
I just don't want to do that, I don't want to do something. So, well, we're gonna let our county manager and Tris try to get with Christian. Well, is that what our plan is for next week, or?
Not, not, no.
We'll, we'll come up with a motion by next week, maybe. Alright, discuss fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, Mr. Tish.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chairman, Board, what you had before, the new beginning, the full year notebook gives the actual complete proposal for twenty-three, twenty-four, and the right one-year notebook is comprised, if it is with a summary, then projected revenues, visuals, recommended expenditure, a twenty twenty-three detailed revenue account statement, due to rate, control, tolls, and taxes through April. And then each general fund department, which consists of staffing numbers, which is the staff that bring it up in each department, clustered expenditures, which outlines personnel, purchases and contracts, supplies, miscellaneous maintenance, and a visual representation of those numbers. Then you have the proposed budget with the twenty-three adopted amounts, the twenty-three, twenty-four requests from the department heads and elected officials, and then my recommendations, followed by the historical expenditures for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three through April, followed by a twenty twenty-three detailed expenditure report. And, and the last portion of the notebook is virtually the same thing, or your special revenue funds, you have your expenditures overall, revenues overall, and your budget. So how would you like we proceed, um, department by department?
You going over this tonight, or we can go back to...
Probably to look at it.
We can look at it, I think we need to look at it, take the lost time, look at it, we got it, of course, and we can, we can do it, of course.
The next week.
Yes, sir, now, so our, our budget is not balanced, however, we are towards about looking at, so what this form is, um, this document reflects what I detailed in my email, that I am proposing, um, two options, either property taxes be raised to meet that short for the new services for the workforce, particularly in our four largest departments, and I can go all the way over, but it's the chair's department, EMS row, and jail, and you can see in the spreadsheet, that I did the calculation to a ten percent reduction, fifteen, fifteen percent reduction, and twenty percent reduction. Now with a twenty percent reduction, then it's going to be a sponsor to our actual business with a standard about a little over nine point five, it's just a nine point seven.
So a twenty percent reduction, the only way most of them can get to a twenty percent reduction is personally.
Yes, sir, if you look at each of your department's, um, budgets that I provided for you, you can see the percentage of each department that's comprised solely of personnel. Um, a lot of departments, thank you for those who have done it, went back and voluntarily cut their budgets as much as they could, but as you can see, most of the, the departments are eighty percent of their budget is a percent ago, and most of the departments are five people or less, except those four.
You know, I think one thing we need to think about is, we need to probably consider doing a higher increase at the moment to stop any more body, folks coming on, so we're not exacerbating the problem by adding bases to the sender. I, I, I don't...
I think my goal moving forward even past this budget cycle is to make sure that we are right sized for what we need here in the county, and make sure that some departments are large or smaller than they need to be, and to make sure to provide and go right amount of services for what we can give people forward.
Yes.
Yes, I've been hearing that fifteen years, but you're...
Well, we there, Joe.
We gonna get it.
I'm not going to radio taxes, I can't do that.
Well, I...
We can serve, I know we can serve.
I just, I can't support property, raising property taxes, when we have not been willing to say no to certain departments and offices, we, we...
I can't support no clean service.
We gotta cut, we gotta cut some, and keep...
We don't have the money to pay...
We're gonna cut EMS, fire department, this is...
Go on, that...
They over, they over, you ain't been, you ain't been, you ain't been, I mean, we done gave them.
How long I been here?
I mean, we done gave them, though.
We need them.
You don't need all of them.
The county need them.
You don't need all of them. We came for it all.
Well, so the proposed budget is twelve, is twelve point seven eight million dollars, that's what's coming in.
Well, this county is, we over, we spend more money than we bring in, that is our business, okay, what nobody...
Well, and we don't have...
You cannot keep on doing it every year, you gotta go in the, in the reserve, the boundary budget, you can't keep on doing it, you gotta do what you gotta do, but this county, it's a small county, you gotta do what you gotta do, you can't keep on doing it.
Well, we don't have the, what, one point two in the Georgia one fund, Tris? Somewhere around that one point two, eight she bucked, about one foot three, so, so we're three million dollars short, we have to wipe out reserves, plus the five hundred thousand dollars, and still not having enough.
And we have no reserve, and then the county gonna be broke, running around here broken, somebody gonna have a recall on our budget, what's happening?
That's right.
Yeah, you can't keep doing it, so it's whole business.
Speaking of what you just said, well, well ago, our county manager, well ago, well ago, our county manager suggested that we raise our, in, our, people put money into the, uh, insurance, from one hundred dollars a month to two hundred, and when I said that's a good idea... You said.
And if you're not, if you're not gambling, if you're not gambling, you can't cut around and put that hundred dollars. Even people hunting up their hundred dollars, but you know, if they gonna walk some, walk away, but the best thing that we gotta do with this budget, you gotta cut service.
Well, we won't have to fire them that walk away from your backyard.
I don't think, I don't think you're going, I don't think there's a way you could do this across the board, because we got some agencies that actually bring money into the county. I'll always pick up with the sheriff's office, he gonna, he's putting in a million dollars this year, more than his budget. So I can't see cutting his budget when he's, when he's putting a million dollars that we definitely need into the budget.
What, he's, his budget, proposed budget is three point eight million, more than three point eight million dollars for the departments he runs. That would be thirty-eight percent of the total budget, if you didn't change it.
How much did he bring in?
He didn't bring anything, the state court brought it in. He wrote, he wrote the tickets, but the state court.
Sheriff's office didn't write the tickets.
But the state court's got to collect it.
State court never would've got the tickets and left the sheriff's office, wrote them.
But we, the state court has said, we're like a forty percent non-pay rate right now. And, and you said, you told us.
Try to do four point one million dollars.
And we've already spent it, cause you said four point two, and we spent four hundred and some thousand dollars on races, and we hadn't even brought that money in yet. So that means he has to bring in four point two.
Is there another, aren't they doing that?
That's not the point, it's not his money, it's the county's money. This is not about the shit, this is not about the sheriff, this is about you can't spend what you don't have.
The point is, you can't do a straight across the board percentage, but.
You can do it.
You could, yeah, you could do it.
You got, you gonna have to do something.
And then you gonna, you gonna really be in a budget.
Well, you, but think about it. When you spending more money, you count on share, and you spending more money than the county. You might bring in. Been done, been done, been done it every year, and then every year we sitting here. And the same thing about a billion dollars, four bucks, we gotta kind of find a balance of budget every year, you can't keep doing it.
You certainly, you certainly can't cut somebody's budget that's bringing in millions more than their budget.
Sheriff bring in over a million, he bring it in, but it be spent too.
It's getting spent. Well, the, the, uh, county commissioner brings in four million and it gets spent?
Yeah, but when you get to with the, um, state court.
EMS brings in five hundred thousand, it gets spent.
Jail, and all of it, if you put all that in, all that money, we spend, cause take all that money, break it, and free, come up and free, we been. Being that he got to have so many employees with, with money, Sheriff bring in.
Well, if the sheriff brings in three point eight, and he costs us three point eight.
That's neutral.
I know, but at the end of the day, that doesn't make sense, we need some of that money to be able to support some of these other, over the past few, over the past ten years. You can look at some of these departments, and they've been constantly been the bill payer, when, when there's been short. You've got to spread this equitably and have all the departments and offices help pay this bill, I'm not saying it has to be one office in particular, I'm saying all of them have to help share and cut, and helping us pay for this. I mean, it came in at twelve point, at, almost twelve point eight million dollars.
Next request, that's just what.
I know, but the point is, it came in at almost thirteen million dollars, and we're hoping that we have nine point seven.
And I think those numbers may be a little low, I think everybody had more.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna budget based on continued budget on various.
Not very just on previous years.
Three, we have a million dollars checking account now?
We got a little bit in the general, general, general account right now.
One point six or seven.
About one point eight.
Okay, but I, I asked you the question, Latrice, do you keep any surplus or, or extra money in your checking account, and you said, no, you do not. So that money is already operated, what we gonna operate on right now. That's right, so that money's spent. To your balance sheet account, now that's what you can see.
Did, you get about me about oh six.
What's the last month that you held from fines?
I think it was three hundred and fifteen thousand or eighty.
I'm talking about what was the last month that was spent with the way collected?
April, oh five.
We got May and June.
The total from July up until April, track the files, three point three. Three point three, oh five, four twenty-six. And all of them, if, if all of the revenues that have, and, and it's just collected, um, are, are in, uh, fat, in, in revenues that.
The revenues are down?
Yes, sir.
The sales taxes are down?
Yes, sir, and property taxes will be lower next year.
Why would property taxes be lower next?
We gave a two percent, uh, seventy plus laws too. For, for giving, for, um, referee gave us an explanation, but, um, we didn't, um, because of some, some.
But yeah, to that, that, I think we're gonna look at that. Let us look, we're gonna look, everybody needs to look over the.
If you think what we got, county gonna be. Be good, bad, not good, people have money to operate a county, save money.
Well, and we still do, we still do. The, uh, we're, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions, there's no doubt on that, but. Like I said, to me, a simple first decision our county manager made was to, unfortunately, they have to let the employees pay more on their insurance, and. We're, we're getting nervous about that, so, to me, that's an easy one. But we'll look at the budgets and y'all look over them, and then we'll have some good tough questions for our county manager to solve the problem next week. County manager's coming.
Yes, sir, I would like to give the board something on our TIA project and our CDBG, um, application. Um, our TIA project, Mr. Dustin has been in contact with, um, statewide, and they're working on, on costing out those roads and the roadlets, and they're gonna do it for the priorities they need. And, um, they are willing to, um, submit that application to the board for us, so, um, I'll keep in contact with Mr. Dustin, so you can keep in contact with statewide. Uh, the CDBG grant, unfortunately, that's something that we may not be able to do, uh, this program, I made contact with the, um, regional commission on Friday. And the engineer cost out the total project at, um, right under two point four million, with the county contribution being, um, right under one point four million. Um, we don't have enough time to have the project re-sold, uh, re-engineered, so it may be in our best interest to go into the future, and, uh, um. That's why I'm picking it up, and I think that she doesn't have it, um, it just switched over to the TIA.
Why, was, why, was, why do we have a fifty percent match on that, or more?
The, the match was only fifteen percent, is, is the, um, the work that needed to be done for the engineer, which is more than we need to spend.
All right, is the two million dollar road, yes?
The reason we had to pay a million, the half of it, the length of the road between the last house coming off of the paved road. To the first house passing it was, we'd have to front that whole spot in the middle, because there's no house, so there's no cost per living that'll be, that can be deducted from it. So we would have to foot that whole area.
They're paying, basically in front of.
They're paying, they're paying in front of the houses, so how many houses we got and low incomes in them houses is what they will match, give us money for. Being that that whole area does not have a house on it, we'd have to pay for every bit of that.
So the fif, so really fifteen percent then, it's, that's, that's misleading to me.
The, the grant is up to a million dollars, to the fifteen percent match, but because of the empty cost of, of maybe ten layers. So if we could've got it within a million.
Yes, then it would.
Fifteen percent of the county cost.
That makes more sense.
Yes, sir.
I understand.
And, um, I think that's all I have, if you have any other questions?
Have any questions?
Chair, this may be a whole public here. Oh, we need to have the public current of the budget scheduled for. It was the close, like, June fifteen, June fifteen.
I'm pushing that.
June fifteen.
Get that, um, I mean, well, to.
Well, we ain't even, I don't know if we're there yet. I mean, you keep that date, but I don't know if we. We're gonna have to an agreement by then. Robbie, you got anything?
I'd love to, Steve, is the public comment?
Yeah.
Um, I know that Latrice's numbers on EMS revenue run a little behind because of bank statements. At present, EMS is looking like we're gonna bring in about five hundred and sixty, five hundred and seventy thousand. We've projected to bring five twenty-five in, so we're over in revenue, which is a good thing. And also, I know that sheriff's, sheriff's departments make money in offset, just want you to remember also, as you look at numbers. EMS brings in that five hundred and twenty-five plus, give or take, you never know, I think one year we were eight hundred dollars short. Uh, but that's possibly forty-two percent of my budget, so we're not just a one point three million dollar budget, we do bring in over half a million dollars, just something to consider, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin. Why? Mr. Mark?
I don't have anything currently, I may by the next meeting.
I do have a comment, Mr. Chair, that's us, I, I just think that when you focus on what departments bring you money, you're being unfair to those departments that are never, they're not ju, money generators. Elections isn't going to generate money, it's not the nature of that business, so you're gonna, and that's just an example, that's just not right, it's not fair. You have to look at what the budget is they're asking for, we have to look at the reality of the deficit, and say, everyone's gotta help make that happen, which is the reality. And some have to take more than others, because they're a bigger budget, it's just, it's just, I, I don't like it any more than anybody else does, but. You can't get there without everybody participating, I just don't see how we do that.
The, uh, Mr. Mayor, you got any comments tonight from Big City Rebecca?
You know, good man, ask for me, thank y'all for what you do. Dustin, Charles. Hey, Dustin helped me with the side on, attorney county colors, over there Rebecca, he helped me with some streets and stuff, and all I done was call.
Hey, keep up with that, right there.
I called, hang on, I ain't too, I called Charles and I called Andy by sending them, I don't know, getting blind in my old age, and I didn't, I didn't think I seen him as much as I did. Radar cars are showing up, and Rebecca, thank you, keep sending them, and one following me, and that's the reason I like to be there today. If y'all raise county taxes, y'all come tell Rebecca, cause I've been going through some of this grant money, I got nothing to do with it, I just sign the checks and it goes out. But when them folks is unhappy, who they gonna come to?
Us.
Me, so.
And you.
But, and I know, and, and don't cut Rebecca out, if you do, if you don't, whatever you do, don't cut Rebecca out. Like you saying, Dan, we way over yonder now, y'all got Aspen and Sycamore, I don't punish it, cause we way over yonder now, so.
I don't think we'll get no tech with it.
Not for me.
Thank y'all for what you do for us, say to him.
Ms. Jane.
This is on the subject and off the subject, I think those of us that take Medicare and do not take the county's insurance should be back to four hundred dollars a month. We still have to pay ten ninety-nine taxes when we do our income taxes, and it's four hundred a month is a far cry from thirteen hundred a month. And I'm sure you'd rather that we take Medicare than for the county to have to pay the thirteen hundred. And there's not that many of us that are senior citizens putting our hard-earned knowledge to work for the county's benefit.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for listening.
Ms. Davis.
Just like to say thank you for your leadership, and when we talk about leaders for the county, conflict resolution is one of those character traits that you have to do, and as team of commissioners. I have faith that y'all will come and have a reasonable budget for the county, and do what you were elected to do by the constituents.
She must saw her budget, didn't go down. Charles, you got anything from the sheriffs?
Uh, we've had our most productive month ever, sheriff's office on track.
Sounds good.
Buy over five hundred tickets.
Anybody else have any public comments? Anybody else have any public comments tonight?
Well, I don't have a public comment, but I'd just like to thank you all for my granddaughter in the proclamation that y'all recognized her, thank you all very much.
We want to thank you for raising a good grandchild there, uh, you did a very good job, I think, good girl. All right, the, uh, we need a session for any reason? All right, motion to a chair? Word, Jerry?